Well, form is present and the time has arrived. So I think I'll call a meeting to order. And the first item of business is the approval of today's agenda. Do I have on motion to approve today's agenda?
Want me to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second.
Motion fails.
I actually have a question. Ah, was it in fact this be in this scheduled for next year to talk, discuss 11/20/25?
Where's that? Oh, yeah, look at that.
It was, it's, that would be a regular rotation. We're bringing it forward out of rotation for discussion. We still, um, so we were indicating there was scheduled for that date, but we're, we're asking for it to be looked at now.
So it's not a mistake.
It's not a mistake.
Okay, all right. Legalize. All in favor of approving the agenda for today's meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed? So cheat sheet out. Is there any public discussion first? Well, then the next item on our agenda is director's evaluation. And I just have a word or two before we begin, which is to remind us that this is one of our most important functions as a board. And it's a function that we do extremely well from what I hear compared to other libraries around the state. So we take it seriously and want to thank the subcommittee that took the work seriously and did, did the work. It is also more or less the only thing that we do out of the eye of the public. And that's probably a good thing. And it's also a legal thing as long as we do it right. So I have consulted with the city attorney to make sure that we say the proper incantations as we do this. And I think with that, I think I'm ready to start the incantations. Ellsworth, you brought, yes, Ellsworth has requested that we use his evaluation in, in the executive session. And I will invite Dan to make a motion that we move into executive session.
Excellent. I move that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to section 21.51I of the Iowa code to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? So if you'll excuse us, okay. So I would, at this point, entertain a motion to adjust the director's salary.
So on behalf of the evaluation committee, I would recommend that we increase the director's salary at 3.25%.
I'll second that. So we moved in the second is, there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of a three and a quarter percent increase in Ellsworth's salary? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you all for, thanks especially to the committee for their work. That's a, that's one of the, that's a lot of work. The next item on our agenda is a review of policy 601 collection development. And it's, Ellsworth mentioned, we're doing this a little early. Um, I'm trying to remember who's responsible for that. And, and, yeah. And do you want to say a word or two?
Yeah, we did not review the entire policy. We just wanted to make a suggestion to the gift collections that are publicly. So we'll keep it to the regular schedule of the review of the entire policy. But we think this would be a small and impactful change to, to the amount of materials that we get through the gift process and to just be aware of what we're, what we're actually taking.
How many gifts do you get that people believe that ever thought people, how to say, several? Several a week?
Yeah. And the majority of which unfortunately are not materials that we can ask the library that we have to, you know, the, the, the process and do our due diligence on it. So, um, you know, we want to, you know, be respectful to the people that are donating these materials. And so, um, I think we'll be able to, um, to be exact, we'll be able to requesting materials through the, you know, the donation request form as opposed to going out like buying a book and bringing them and it's already in the collection. It's not doing material that we're able to add. And so that's saving people, you know, like re-educating the book, you know, you know how our process works.
We're still happy to have it for friends, right?
Yes.
We're not going to tell people, we don't want your book. It's just, we're not going to put it in the collection.
Yeah. We do advise people when they bring books to be donated to the collection that, there, that if it's possible to add it to the collection, maybe the bill, this is how policy worked before. Now they'll be saying, you know, we would like to consider this for the bookstore. And this is how the policy works. And so we'll work on how to, you know, feel some impact of the public.
You elucidate a bit, the final sentence is, this is the generally question in the second paragraph. What, what are the, why do you need the exception?
Well, an example would be that we're going to build our world languages collection. And that's very difficult for us, just materialism, languages from vendors. But we might have, we have a community of readers and collectors that we might, so those things come through development office and we tell them these are our needs. And those will change year in year. Development office can look out for those.
Okay.
And we might even be able to develop special relationships and create special pathways for, to help develop the role language program, for example.
Anything else?
No, I mean.
So I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the change to policy 601. And the second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And our next policy review is policy 12 hours of service.
I was amazed at how often this, it's changed. I mean, I've lived here a long time and I always thought it's pretty much the same.
Yeah.
But it isn't. It's extraordinary.
Yeah. Really, all we're doing is adding some history to the policy. So as policy, nothing extra changed since, we're still doing the same things. So if there aren't any questions or comments on that, I'll take a motion to approve the changes to policy 12.
Move then we approve the change of this policy 12.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yeah, we move on to review of, oh no, the set calendar for next fiscal year. Don't recall there being anything really personal or exciting there. Have any questions or comments?
Can you ask? That summer festival, I can't remember where it is, where we had to, we stayed open later for family activities.
The block party.
The block party. Is that?
I don't think we've included that before in previous calendars, have we?
Extended hours.
We did.
Oh, yeah.
We did, just.
It was a union issue.
In the last couple of years because we haven't extended our hours. Or we haven't opened the rest of the building, just the lobby. And it's usually like Ellsworth or general coordinators who stay just for the lobby area. We haven't.
So we've taken into consideration, we've just decided not to be explicit.
We heard the rest of the building wasn't quite used. That it was like the first or second year and building wasn't used quite what we had thought.
Letting people in later, yeah.
But yeah, and I think within the children's room especially. And got into a very.
So we don't expect any union concerns this year, wow.
No, like Andy said, we've kept it open the past two or three. We have, I think last year we didn't stay open late at all because it was during ALA and we had people out.
Oh, that's right.
But we've, we mostly stay open for air conditioning and bathroom access. And if we decided to do a program in one of the meeting rooms, that would be included in that lobby space. So we don't ask units staff to work.
I think the, yeah. So anything else? Okay. All in favor? Sorry, I need a motion. We're on hours, yeah.
I just have one question. Why sometimes six and sometimes five and sometimes four? Is that, did I miss that whole conversation just now? You've already had that conversation.
Oh, that's a good, yeah, good question.
I'm just curious, is there a reason for that? Like why are, why is six o'clock on Veterans Day and not five? I mean, I understand probably the Christmas Eve one for sure. But I'm just curious, like, what? Why six and not five?
Like a tiered, a tiered level of emotional engagement, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious if that's related to something or if that's just like to make a nice shift.
No, that's a good question.
Number or?
So the 10 to six, the holiday staffing is what, Jen corrected or wrong? But that's what the library has defined as the holiday hours. So those are holiday hours at library. The 10 to five are city holiday. So those are, those are, that's what the city operates on on those days. So we reflect the 10 to five and the 10 to six. The 10 to four, I'm less confident about. The difference there is.
I don't want to make anyone stay an extra hour.
I guess she does.
Part of this is to make sure that the part-time staff can have their full shifts.
Sure.
So we can know their positions that are hourly. But the designated holiday that's 10 to four on December 24th, is that just because we always close at four on the day before Christmas?
I would totally acknowledge you. I mean, yeah, we probably play around with hours at some point.
Okay.
And I think that the, some of the reason we do this formally once a year is to set the expectation for the year so that, so there isn't any in the moment juggling of, should we be open until six or five on that day? So staff have the, the full year to know what to expect for the next year.
There would be the fact that the extended inconsistency because right now, the general info desk has one 10 to four shift and one 10 to two shift that day. So we would need more hours.
Oh, I totally understand that. I was just, there's more of that why six o'clock and why five o'clock. Not to make, I've had to set hours for places before. And inconsistency is super confusing to the general public. And so that's why I was just curious if that was related to something. And that makes sense if it's sometimes a city holiday and sometimes your holiday hours. And I totally understand. It makes an easier shift if you have a six hour or an eight hour board. So I completely, I'm just curious.
So board action is required. So I'll accept a motion to set the calendar for the next fiscal year.
So moved.
And the second?
All second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is to review a draft of the advocacy committee letters.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to begin it because it already is, it's already outdated.
But I think this is a bigger issue, right? The updating is an issue too.
Outdating, it is a bigger issue. So I guess this is an extensive draft because there's whole sections that are already outdated. I think that spirit of it is so important. I also encourage particularly John, who's a close reader and excellent editor, to be, do some serious editing here because, um, I always think that they're too long. You want to put them in context to make it relevant to people. But also you got to keep it short and this is already too long. Um, I didn't, you know, how to.
That's not a one pager is pretty.
You think that's fair? I was like, ugh, I wrote a five paragraph essay. As soon as I finished my fifth paragraph, I was like, I followed the format. But also I guess that's what people are accustomed to, but.
We don't have to say, I'm here trying, but I'm wondering how comfortable people are with the context of what's going on in this letter. And, you know, one of the challenges we had as a committee is we start to have pressing needs. But in order to get the board together to sign off on something, the time is too long. And so we then come to a point where the letter is no longer relevant. However, the issue has been addressed, whether it's in agreement with us or in disagreement or in stalling. Like this isn't really over. This is stalled. So while we look at this letter, I also think we need to take into the issue of the process of making a statement. And how do we do it in a timely way? We cannot send out an email to all of you because we would violate open meeting laws. So we're, we're, our options when we looked at was an emergency meeting, which means everyone had to come in for discussion just this one topic. Or to let the issue sit and fizzle when this was, this, this issue is about the existence of library boards. And I can't think of anything that would be more core to this group than the role of library boards, whether we agree with the standard or not. So I think we also, it's not only this letter, it's the process around the letter that we need some input from the group.
I'm comfortable with doing emergency meetings. I mean, hopefully it's not going to be every week.
No, and we had one.
There's a season to this.
Yeah.
We have one. Yeah, with another letter that we wrote, so, yeah.
Because we only need, we need 24 hours, right?
24 hours in a quorum, right? So.
So it doesn't even need to be all of us, we just.
And we hold those meetings through Zoom. Do we need to, for people, just because it's an emergency meeting?
I don't think we need a special dispensation.
We did cover this in the dialogue review, but I.
I think we know this issue because I, I, even if I'm an optimist and I think this will be an easy season, this is not over. This is beginning. And this is a significant issue about local control. And I think we should, whether you agree with our standard, I think we need to take a stand on this topic. It's, it's just a responsibility of the board. And the reason I picked on Sam, who's not here, Sam is leading a lot of this activity and, endlessly, and can speak to a lot of these issues in detail.
Aren't they going to drop this? I mean, reading that.
No, they are, they are refining.
They only paused.
Right, they're refining.
Refining.
So it's, it has been voted in subcommittee. And it's now paused for addendums before it goes to the full committee, this particular one. There's a similar one already and this is in the House. There's another one in the Senate. It's basically the same thing, really. It's all about who has control of banning books, I think is the subtext. Is, um, and I think a lot of it is in response to what happened in Pella.
But I think the context that the ILA is taking right now is to avoid the banning books issue and to look at this in terms of local control and allocation of funding. That we don't bring in too many issues at once. And we simply say, allow your local board of trustees who are appointed by your government to work your libraries. If we start bringing in a lot of issues, it's going to become very complex and it's going to be a very different discussion. We're trying to stick to local rule and that your communities have voted on levies and funding for your library that's dedicated. However, when you put this into the general fund, you are going against the vote of your local community. So we are trying to be very precise about what we're doing. And this isn't over, we'll be meeting, ILA has, well, one thing I want to encourage everyone is to consider coming to lobby day on March 5th. But on that day also, there'll be a small committee that has been invited to speak with some of the legislators again, specifically on this point, on these points.
Sam said before the meeting that she, the pause is just in wait for communication on this March 5th date like this. And then after March 5th, when the person who has put forward these bills has met with ILA.
Right.
So then some change may happen and it could be no change. Like that, the change could be no change. He's just paused it to hear from interested parties.
Well, and he's inviting, and during lobby day, there's three of us that are going to have a chance to speak to him. ILA is letting a small group in to speak. And I'll go in to represent the trustees in general in, in the state and looking at local rule. However, I want to say like, I know people's schedules and people's personalities don't always fit into going to lobbying day. There's an opportunity to give an opinion on these issues when they arise online. And you don't have to do anything complex. You can simply say, please vote no on this, or I am a trustee, or please, maybe you're going to say, please vote yes. But I am a trustee. And the number of responses that these, these proposed bills received did influence the stall. I strongly believe that. And when we met with people in Des Moines already, I think they were stunned to see that there was an outcry across the state saying, and of the comments I read, and maybe Ann saw this more today, I didn't see any in support of this legislation I saw. Or there was one, I generally saw opposition. But it's a chance to hear the reaction. You can do it in private. It's really easy just to pull it up. We can, the advocacy committee could take on that task if it helps people just to send out the links. Ellsworth also sent out the links about where this is. But take a moment when they come out and, and read what people are saying. Because sometimes the bill looks kind of innocuous. But when you read the comments, you understand the context around this. And it may affect how you view these bills.
What's our city council done? Have they, I don't see them on this list, so.
The councils.
Were, has any, anybody on the council said anything, council of Iowa City?
I don't know if Ann wants to comment here, having been following, but the, the city council consortium is a little mixed. Um, I think there's a lot of kind of waiting in the middle, but there are city leaderships in different cities saying, please don't do this. There are others, according to the legislators, saying, we would like you to give us rule as city councils over this. Iowa City has been quiet, well, they, behind the scenes have been very supportive on paper. But has, I think there's a fear of retribution to some of this.
Yes, I would say our, so my liaison in the city manager's office is Redmond Jones, who has come to meetings before. He, a big part of his work is working with the lobbyists and staying abreast of this. So he and I are in consistent conversation with, um, the, the bills related to board governance. I did send Redmond, who's our liaison, and Jeff Fruin, the city manager, and Bruce Teague, the mayor, a message sort of saying, hey, I just want to make sure this is on your radar. Here are, if you're moved to action with ILA, there's a petition that can be signed. Here are links to the bill book. Let me know if you have any questions. That to me felt like the appropriate way to communicate the issue, make sure they knew the, the options. I also specified, um, reaching out to the city's lobbyists or to the league of cities, which I think my impression is the league of cities might be hearing more from cities who are in support than in opposition. I don't, I'm not for the information, but they have not made a direct statement on this. I will say, as I expressed earlier, um, that I appreciate that the city has considered the library's initiatives in its lobbying efforts and I do feel supported whether or not they put their name on the petition.
You know, I just, it's curious to me, I guess, that I don't see Cedar Rapids on here. I don't see Iowa City. I don't even see Des Moines, I don't think. You know, the big cities, Sioux City might be on here.
So let me challenge you a little bit. I mean, one thing that cities could be thinking is that if there are no longer designated funds, they have discretion to use the funds in whatever way they feel is appropriate within their own city budget, particularly with funding being decreased. So if they want to increase their police force, the funds that could have been dedicated to library previously can start going into those structures. However, that's not how the funds are generally voted on. What we've done is taken away the designations that they go into a general fund. So you are giving some flexibility to the city. What you have to think about is what did your community state as a priority?
It is interesting that, I would just imagine that the larger cities will come to with independent or semi-autonomous boards of trustees. So it is kind of curious to me that, on the other hand, it may be that they've just got, I, I know when I worked at the university, there were, you know, bubbling up, there were a thousand things that we wanted lobbyists to talk about. And the university rightly focused on two, you know? And so maybe that's just the city's attitude is, we got a couple of things we can drive to the extension and, yeah.
I also want to say like libraries are a little bit different from other city functions and that we've always tried to have protection of intellectual freedom. And so we're, we're a different animal in many ways than firefighters or parks and recreation. You know, there, there's a different part of a democratic base that we're protecting here with their ideas.
And I would just say, but I wonder if cities are interested in not being, not having to have a vote, not having to have a referendum to utilize the monies. I wonder if that is the big motivating factor here is to not have to have a vote to be able to manipulate money.
And if you think of the time you put in as a trustee, the work that we do here, that will all fall on paid city staff. So if you already think your city staff is a little bit stretched, throw these tasks on top of it. And the training and the accreditation requirements to keep continuing education going. And it's going to be a burden on these councils.
My assumption when seeing the cities that were left off was that when Iowa City has made strong statements in the past, the legislature has intentionally done.
Right.
Right.
My assumption was that maybe by not speaking out or by not signing, the, the city's making a bigger statement.
Even with the letter, I wonder if we could tonight spend a little time about your feedback, redraft. And it feels to me like, uh, if the letter is a little bit general, then the moving pieces, you, you know, could be accommodated. And we can publish it before March 5th. And probably have the effect that we're trying to.
Which would be an emergency meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to have a special meeting.
Special meeting.
Yeah.
And the reason March 5th is important is because that's the lobbying day. That's when a lot of this will be discussed. So if we could get it out sooner, I think that's a great deadline.
Right.
And maybe in a couple of days earlier so that people can respond to it. Or if we include a link, if you would like to provide comment on these bills.
Yeah.
This is where you would go.
Maybe you guys all have an opinion about it. But my thought with this letter was to encourage the public to make a one-line statement to their, on the bill, to say that they oppose. Well, hopefully they would oppose. But, but I think, um, putting it in a context helps people want to take action. So my thought in making that the public statement would be to encourage people to not have their vote taken away from them. I guess is really, because that's what the purpose of this bill is to keep communities from being able to vote on major community resources. So that was my.
Call for action. And I think the, um.
Maybe, maybe that's part of my edits.
As Robyn said, I think the motivating message is, um, we have a, a great system in place in which a board of trustees stewards the precious, precious resource of their community and turning that over to city councils, as these bills would do. But it's these resources at risk, right? That's, that's kind of what you're saying.
So you're suggesting an ending paragraph that would be a specific action.
Yeah, absolutely. The last thing is a call for action. Other thoughts about the letter?
I definitely agree with the approach of it. I mean, to make it general, can we just, I mean, I, I think these things are still alive. So, you know, do we need to, I mean, I guess by calling out the name of the bill, you're giving people a place to comment. A more general statement says, you know, these are the pressures that are faced or, you know, this is what's threatened.
And I think people don't know what board of trustees do.
Yeah. No, and I think that does a really good job, I, you know, both of those, spelling out what, what happens under current state law in the second paragraph. And, and I think, you know, that, that closing paragraph, you know, is a, you know, you've got your one line right there, right? Keep public libraries free and public. Keep them from being one more thing on the plates of city council members and the state. So, yeah, I feel like those two tasks are pretty well achieved.
I'm just really surprised, I'll, you know, just add that.
I'm just really surprised, uh, you know, just add that my, uh, conservative friends are wanting to centralize this. We don't like centralization, I will say. The conservatives do not, and so I just, I don't like, that's why I don't like these bills, because I, I don't like that. You know, I like the local control and not.
And that stress, yeah, your letter is key.
Yeah, I, in fact, right now, a community can have a referendum to change how they're voting.
Right, they're already getting.
I mean, just the fact that city councils are appointing trustees.
Right.
So there are, there is already city council control in some way.
Yeah, we're not elected, we're not, you know, yeah.
Some way, and then they can also have a vote to change term limits or whatever.
And not all those communities have governing boards. There are two that have advisory boards, and the city councils already manage those.
Really?
Lord North Liberty is one, so it's a very, it's a community fit, it's a community fit.
Yeah, so rather than get into a, um, line-by-line group edit, I, I think, could we each communicate editorial thought to Robyn and Claire, that would only be two people, so it's a meeting, um. And then when you've got something ready for, uh, a special meeting, and as, as you pointed out, it's great if we can get everybody there, but we only need a quorum to, to do our work, so we can, we can get a meeting together.
Great.
Yeah.
How's that sound to people?
I will say, like, this was written on Saturday, Robin read it on Wednesday, and the law had already been stalled by, had gone through subcommittee by Friday. So it's like, this is like a less than one week.
Right, it moves fast.
Timeline, which is part of the frustration for advocacy, because it, it's already changed by the time you can assemble.
But I think it'll be good for us to learn that, we need to figure out a way to be nimble as a group.
Yeah, and thank you for that work, this is, you know, talk about a lot of time and effort and.
And anyone that wants to say one more thing, thank you.
Because there is a need for, for people to be there, to know this is an important issue.
Great, and thank you both for your, your hard work on that, um. Which brings us to staff reports, starting with the director's report, some of which covered.
Yeah, I think we've already covered quite a bit of it, uh, was immediately out of date, but we can, um. I give huge credit to the number of library staff and folks on the leadership team who are paying attention to and staying up to date on that stuff. It is fast, it's emotional, um. It's, it's interesting, um, we're all looking forward to the second film, um. Otherwise, just gave a brief CIP, uh, update to add on to that just a little bit, um. We went into this project relatively confident that the bulletin table was signed, and we have learned that it's not. I, there was a small patch of sand through. I made the decision to carry on with the project, um, I believe it will be a visible mar on the table. We were doing this project because it wasn't in great shape to begin with, I feel like this is a better use of resources than, than replacing the table. So we'll, um, we won't tell you where it was, we'll see if you can find it when we're done, but the project is moving on, um, it's on schedule, everything seems fine. IT's been carrying a heavy burden with it, um. I asked the person doing the millwork if this means it's the last time the table, because you're finished, and he said, probably not. He'll put a nice thick layer, um, on top of it, so I, I believe that the longer we can save that stuff, the better stewardship of the resources, um, and then just included the details of the vacancy, um, on the board that's been in the council packet, um. And I typically don't get any information about applications until, until they go into a council packet for discussion, um. But if anybody has questions about, or, or hears from people who have questions about um, the library and would like to connect them with me, of course, I'm more than happy to talk about it. The, in, for gender balance, it does need to be a female identified person at this point, although a few have noticed that it's also up for conversation at a state level, um, I assume that, that that expectation will hold through the appointment of this person.
And I would encourage you to think hard about people that could serve on the board and, you know, help us do our work and encourage them, though. Any questions for Ellsworth? Hey, Children's Services Report. Add any questions?
Can I, yeah, yes, a quick question on the last thing, I'm sorry, I'm a beat behind. I don't know if we acknowledge our appreciation for Lucy for her short term, because her resignation, so can we in a minute at least acknowledge her value to the board?
Sure, yeah, let's. Let's just note that we discussed that.
I mean, she's really a lot of leadership on some of these, these larger issues, and I want to make sure we acknowledge that, she's an expert.
You should have done a better job of encouraging her to buy a house in Iowa City.
That's right, I wouldn't.
If we didn't own, you know, yeah, let us realty services on behalf of the board, gosh. You have a great neighborhood.
Okay, anything on children's services? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The collection?
I took a deep dive into.
Yeah, that's really, it's helpful.
Since I'm really.
Let's just leave them happy.
In February, right?
So the Anne's, um, report here has been shared across the state in multiple places, not places, because it was such a well-written.
Yeah, it really, really did help me understand, and I, once upon a time, did I dive into that part of the law, and I was so confused, so thank you. Um, and IT. Anything on IT? Well, thanks for the reports, I think, congratulations on contributing to the town base.
That was very sweet.
Yes. Um, see development, Katie, Katie had some good news in her report, lots of good news, but being way ahead on fundraising is especially good news.
Things are going very well in fundraising, I will say that any, um, advocacy that folks can use to solve the fingerprint ticket sales for looking, looking forward would be much appreciated, and Tom, I've noticed, um, some of the advocacy that you and Bart have done, so thank you so much for that. Um, and so if anyone has any questions about how they might be able to help with that effort, I think I'd be delighted to.
Uh, we have some news articles. Bring us the presidents of the board, um. I've asked John, Claire, and Dan to serve on the nominations committees, so they will, uh, present a slate at the April meeting. Uh, we also can take nominations from each floor at the April meeting, if you want to do that. I'll be on with that.
We said we could have a coup.
Oh, please. So thank, thank you all for being willing to do that, um. If you get a call from one of them, please pick it up, and, um.
Otherwise, you know you're nominated.
And respond with an open heart, um. Also, I have in my notes from my report, uh, encouragement to support the uh, Looking Forward events, that's Dave Agers on March 7th, Ollie on Wu on March 29th. You haven't got tickets, you can grab those now, there, um, there are pay what you choose options, so whatever fits for you. Um, it's good, and encourage your friends, um, you know, you don't want to spam your whole directory too often, um, but you could consider sending out emails to some of your friends, telling what, uh, these are gonna be cool events, and they're important to the library. While we're talking about those, um. I'd also encourage you to consider, during the course of the year, a donation to the, um, Friends Foundation, it's absolutely not a requirement of service on this board, but, um, you love the library, and, uh, writing a check will help the library, so I'd encourage you to consider doing that, too.
Or set up monthly deductions on your account.
Overdue fines that you're not paying to the library.
That's right.
Yeah, I redirected that.
What you would have paid, nobody pays.
I actually.
Double mind donation. That way.
Um, and that's the end of my report, are there any announcements from members?
I just want to make another statement of appreciation, I know the staff has been putting a lot of time into these legislative issues and a lot of energy, and I, on a state level, I think it's, it's demonstrated tremendous leadership. And, you know, it's multiple staff members, it's really, I think, these are big issues, they're core to what we do.
Thank you. To piggyback on that, Anne, reading your comments on the bill helped me kind of think, put my disagreements into perspective, so I saw you out there on the bill itself, or on the public statement, so definitely look to you guys, too, for just like different, different point of view, in contact with.
The, the thing I'm asking Elswood, too, is to, to remind people, if you joined ALA, if you took the library up on membership, the presidency election's coming up, and you might want to look at the candidates.
Yeah, the date for the ALA election, um. March 3rd.
So before we meet again.
And it goes through April 11th.
I forgot your campaign manager, I had to find it, but.
Yeah, plenty of time, and, um, there's a website that you can go to, um, and look at both of the candidates. When they both buy, okay.
You want to go to www.samforlibraries.com, um, you can, um, learn more about Sam and their candidacy, but you can also um, find out more about Ray Pun, who is also, um, an excellent choice for ALA, um. He has great qualities, too, they're both very different, um, in their candidacies, um, and I think they would be, you know, excellent to lead ALA into the future, so. Um, if you are a voting member or a paid member of A and B, you are able to vote starting March 3rd, April 11th.
I think it's, I think it's March 11th, maybe the 3rd.
Oh, I, I have never dyslexic.
I didn't remember it at all, so I'm impressed, um, and, yeah, I dug down what Andrew said, the elections committee for ALA, I think this was the best slate of, um, potential presidents that they've, in my career, maybe have put together, um. I think, um, I think they really did a nice job sort of spanning membership as far as what's available to vote for, um. So you know who to vote for, but, um, if you haven't joined yet, um, you can talk to Jim, the library does cover that membership, um. And it wouldn't be to vote in the election, ALA is a great resource, and it, it avails you to some things that, that non-paying members don't have access to, um. And the ALA website has quite a bit of information about the, the candidates for presidency, as well as the counselor-at-large and bylaw amendment and other things that will be on the, the ballot.
Yeah, that brings us to committee reports, I think we heard from advocacy, anything from finance?
We met.
Great.
Yep.
And we decided to, we're going to review after each quarter. At the first meeting, first Thursday, after the, the quarterly things come out, the, the one that isn't the meeting of the whole group, of the trustees, we're gonna meet, and we also have said to, um, uh, that we would be willing to be consulted and to be advisory, uh, to the director if he felt the need for it.
Great. So. Okay, so we would expect quarterly reports from the committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Uh, I don't know if Friends Foundation met representatives to the.
Um, John's one of the representatives on the, on the finance committee.
What is John not doing?
Ah, we appreciate.
So I don't know if there's anything from the Friends Foundation board.
No, except that, you know, the money is rolling in, and, uh, that's what it's all about.
That's funny, so.
That's right. Very impressive.
Okay, I don't, did I miss any committees? I have a report from. Uh, okay, so there were communications included in the packet. And we get to the consent agenda, uh, minutes and the disbursements, motion to approve the consent agenda.
There is a typo in the minutes, um, and I just, I think it was the vote for the consent agenda that said eight, 10, not eight, zero.
Okay, thank you. So we can approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the minutes. Words are failing me, but it's a good thing we're near the end of the meeting, my brother sent me a refrigerator that says, um, my mind is sharp as a whatchamacallit. So, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda.
All move to approve.
Second?
Can second?
Thank you, and all in favor? I, I, when you oppose. Right, motion passes, uh, look to the agenda, March meetings, like we're doing. Laws review by 700, community relations, 702 library programs, and we'll have reports from adult services and community access services. Having reached the end of our agenda, I will adjourn the meeting, so thank you, and to all. Effective meeting, thank you.